Good evening, everybody. It's 5:30. I call this meeting to order. Approval of the agenda. Any changes?
I have no changes. I move we approve.
Do they have a motion?
Yep.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Rajaratnam?
Present.
I'm sorry. I said roll call. Do we want to do the motion first, then we'll do roll call since we have a motion and a second on the floor? So let's do that first.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Rajaratnam?
Present.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Aye for the motion? Okay. Mr. Gorman?
Aye for the motion.
We have four ayes, one absent. Motion carries. And now we'll do roll call. And I'll start with Mr. Rajaratnam, who's running the meeting this evening.
Present.
Mr. Blades?
Present.
Mr. Hayman?
Present.
Mr. Gorman?
Present.
Mayor Bruin is absent tonight.
Next item, public comment on closed session. Do I have any public comment from the floor? Any comments on the phone? Seeing none, we will move on to closed session.
Thank you. Professor? Versus the city of Richcrest.
All right, Martin, we're going to retire to the back.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this evening's city council meeting. We came out of the closed session and starting the regular session. I request you all to stand for pledge of allegiance, please. And I request Councilman Gorman to lead us in the pledge. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. I request Councilman Dr. Hayman to lead us in the invocation, please.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the blessings that you have given us. Lord, I ask you for your guidance and your wisdom in guiding this council on our decision-making and our work for the city. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Please be seated. Attorney would report on the closed session now. Go ahead, sir.
Our mute's on.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. One item was considered by council in closed session, existing litigation, Finley versus city of Richcrest. No reportable actions were taken by the city council in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's move on to the next item, presentations. The first one is Reserve Police Officers Rodney Robbs' retirement, 21 years, presented by Chief McLaughlin.
Thank you. Tonight, we're here to send off our friend, colleague, Rod Robbs. Rodney has volunteered with us for the last 21 years and given immense amount of hours and dedication to the city. And I know you guys have recognized his young face at most of the football games, basketball games, and any other event that we needed him at, as well as crime scenes, and he did everything. So the taxing toll that we put on our volunteers is great. They help us out. We couldn't do it without them. And I want to thank Rod for giving us 21 years of dedicated service. Thanks, Rod.
20 minutes. 20 minute speech?
Well, I need to run the bat, so 20 minutes.
Sorry, chief. I don't have 20 minutes. I just want to thank everybody. It's been a wonderful 21 years. It's a lot different now than it used to be. A month after I swore in, 9/11 happened. We were all loved after that. Little different now, little different world. But it's been wonderful, and I thank the city and the chief and the police department for all the opportunities I was given as a reserve. Thank you very much.
Counsel, would you mind coming down so we can get a picture with Rod? So you're the first one to get one. That's beautiful.
Meet you in all these pictures.
Yes.
Day. I'm assuming that's why you guys are all here, right? Cool. Yeah, if you would, come over here and sit over here, and I'll read this off. Whereas, on a date lost in history, a young Marine handed a grenade to a pilot who subsequently deployed it during a combat mission in the First World War. Is that true? And whereas, chief gunner's mate, a chief turret captain, and several mechanics were sent forth to pioneer the Navy's first advanced aircraft armament and ordnance system in Pensacola, Florida. And whereas, the California grand jury is an arm of the Superior Court. And whereas, on the second day of March 1926, the United States Navy declared the establishment of the aviation ordinance rating and all four petty officer grades of chief first, second, and third class and the aviation ordinance specialty mark, a winged flaming spherical shell, was incorporated into the uniform regulations in January 1927. And whereas, the establishment of the Association of Aviation Ordinancemen in 1976, leading to the first annual convention in San Diego, California, formally opening membership to all Navy and Marine Corps ordnancemen past, present, and future. Whereas, transferred to the United States Navy in November of 1943 by the United States Army Air Forces at the conclusion of the search for an adequate ordnance testing facility by Charles C. Lawrenson and Sherman E. Burrows, Naval Ordnance Test Station was founded, leading to the development of an array of airworthy conventional rockets and missiles to include the AIM-9, SLAM ER, Tiny Tim Rocket Unit, and much more. Naval Air Weapons Station China Lake has been the home of ordinance. Now, therefore, the Richcrest City Council hereby proclaims the day of March 2, 2023, as Aviation Ordnance Day, and asks all citizens of Richcrest to join with the Association of Aviation Ordinancemen, Fifth Chapter, in carrying the message and recognition of the tasks and hardships carried out and endured by naval ordnancemen and women, ordinance handlers, engineers, and scientists aboard NOS China Lake Air Test and Evaluation Squadron 9, Air Test and Evaluation Squadron 31, NOS China Lake Weapons Department, Explosive Ordnance Disposal Detachments, and other associated military and civilian components that have led to the progression and advancement of conventional weapons testing capabilities, ordinance, and armament systems, procedures, training, and tactics for the fleet. Proclaim this first day of March 2023 by Mayor Eric Bruin, Mr. Solomon Rajaratnam, Mayor Protem, Mr. Scott Hayman, council member, Mr. Skip Gorman, council member, and myself, council member. Thank you, gentlemen.
I just want to thank my chain of command, the support from the members of my ordinance association, my counterparts here in the city council, for giving us this great honor today. Thank you all.
If we could get all you guys up front. Whoever else you want to come up and get some pictures of you. Yes.
Next item, public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not act on an item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Mr. Mike Sonat.
Sir, my name is Mike Sonat. I'm going to read a letter that I sent via email to Sheriff Donnie Youngblood on February 2. "Dear Sheriff Youngblood, it is hoped that following videos and statements from multiple doctors and experts in their field will provide your department with sufficient information to establish probable cause to search and seize all mRNA COVID vaccine vials from Kern County medical providers that have been produced by Pfizer, Moderna, AstraZeneca, BioNTech, and Janssen. Pfizer's mRNA COVID vaccine is likely a bioweapon, supporting information from available multiple sources outside the mainstream media as the information from multiple doctors and researchers below show. Elected representatives in Kern County have a duty and a moral obligation to demand an end to the COVID-19 mRNA jabs immediately. You have the constitutional authority to stop the distribution and injection of fraudulent mRNA gene therapy in Kern County, California. Sheriff Youngblood, you are the county sheriff and the last line in defense as the duly-elected constitutional authority and law enforcement officer in Kern County. This is my complaint. I urgently request that you give this most serious matter your immediate attention. I assert that the following information has been produced by reputable sources and experts in their fields. Mike Sonat, Kern County resident." Now, I've in the post on Roadrunner 395, if anybody wants to look, at the top, there's a post, and I'm going to read the title of the post. It's been updated today. "To Kern County Sheriff Donnie Youngblood, complaint filed. Seize the mRNA vials; the evidence is indisputable." What I'm going to do is very quickly read the subtitles. And you can come to this website, to this post, and check the information yourself. There's probably 15 subtitles at this point. Dr. Michael Eden, "The criminal actions of Big Pharma and global governments are massive." There's a video. Retzif Levy, PhD, MIT professor, "Stop giving mRNA vaccinations immediately. Quote, 'The evidence is indisputable,' end quote." He's an MIT professor and drug safety analytics specialist. There's a video from Project Veritas uncovering a uncover of a Pfizer executive talking about their directed evolution program. That's fascinating, from Project Veritas. "The scandal would be enormous. Pfizer director worried about vax-induced menstrual irregularities. Is the mRNA injection a bioweapon? Daily clout: infants and childrens under 12 given the Pfizer mRNA vaccine seven months before pediatric approval. Seventy-one percent of adverse event cases classified as serious." The mainstream media is sponsored by Pfizer. There's a video there that has every big program on TV sponsored by Pfizer. They've all bought off. There's also the Died Suddenly video, which shows the clotting and the, a lot of videos of people just dropping dead. Dr. Michael Eden, former vice president of Pfizer, "We have been lied to by government officials and corporate types about absolutely everything to do with this so-called virus pandemic." I think I told you that almost three years ago. Dr. Peter McCullough, a world-renowned expert, "Alarmingly high rates of teen myocarditis found in Thailand study." There's videos. Tucker Carlson asked Dr. Peter McCullough, "Why is there a rise of deaths in young athletes?" I'm going to stop right now. There's one more I want you to hear. Dr. Naomi Wolf, "It is the greatest crime against humanity." The county sheriff is the last line of defense. He has the authority, just like Fentanyl, to seize these vials with probable cause. And I'm going to continue to call the county sheriff and ask for him to investigate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Neill, go ahead, sir.
Yes, decline to give name due to the right given me under the Brown Act. But you love the Brown Act because it citizens ensures their right in law to speak to you, councilman, because they have to listen, but it says, say, I get to speak. Fully support everything you just heard from Mr. Sonat. I'm well familiar with most of all that information. And just bring to your attention that this quote-unquote "false" vaccine, it violates the International Bioweapons Treaty from back in, this is like the late 80s, testified to by a former Harvard Law professor who's been against this from day one. It violates all kinds of things that are right and does tremendous amounts of harm to the populations you're going to see in the coming years. It is within the purview of this council. Take up a matter that is harmful to their citizens and pass a resolution to write letters to whoever they so choose, to the county, to the county sheriff, to the governor, to higher officials, and call for rights of this tremendous wrong that's been done to the citizens in this country. And I stand by what Mr. Sonat just said and what I say here before you. This is the worst crime against our citizens we've ever seen. And it's only going to show itself to be worse in the coming days. Now, as to other matters, much, much more minor in compare. Apologizing, Mr. Gorman, I was going to bring him a little gift, give him, bring him a little donation can so he could put up his spite Mike Neal can somewhere like, oh, the Desert Valley Federal Credit Union or the swap sheet where I'm sure they would love to put that up, and just ask people to put in a penny for every spite to Mike Neal that they have. See how much you get. So I'll give that to you someday soon, and we can see. As to current practice in these chambers for long standing, I continue to note that we have a banner up there in front of everybody to see. It says, "In God we trust." I think it may still be out in the lobby. It's been there so long, you kind of don't notice it. We continue to have invocations to ask for God's blessing in these chambers prior to every meeting. You would think that that would indicate a small measure at least of reverence towards the King of the universe, who sees everything and hears everything that occurs in that universe, particularly amongst people. Regrettably, some don't seem to have much appreciation for that. I'm going to address this in future days because, as you're all sure, you figured it out, I'm talking about Mr. Bruin's last regrettable comment at the meeting last time, and I enjoy saying this face-to-face with him. I'll just give you a couple of comments. By founding fathers has to do with the issue of morality in government. James Madison said, "The aim of every political constitution is, or ought to be, first, to obtain for rulers men who possess most wisdom to discern and most virtue to pursue the common good of society, and then a next place to take the most effectual precautions for keeping them virtuous while they continue to hold their public trust." In short, he's saying you need virtuous leaders. Samuel Johnson said, "No people can be great who cease to be virtuous." We like to pride ourselves on our greatness, American greatness, America first. We need to act virtuous, and our leaders need to act virtuous. John Witherspoon said, "Let a man's zeal, profession, or even principles as to political measures be what they will if he is without personal integrity and private virtue. As man, he is not to be trusted." And as to a higher authority, Exodus 27 says, "You shall not take the name of the Lord your God in vain, for the Lord will not hold him guiltless who takes his name in vain." I believe that's all that needs to be said on that at this time.
Thanks, Mr. O'Neill. Thanks for your input. Any other public comments from the floor? Any public comments on the phone? Seeing none, we will move on. Council announcements, direction. I'll start with Councilmember Gorman. If you have any.
Not really. I appreciated the proclamation. I've spent many hours over my career at China Lake and missile shops worldwide. It seems where the rubber meets the road is right there. Very serious people, all wearing grounding straps, nobody smoking, lots of explosives right close by. These fellows do a wonderful job, and I appreciate them. That would be my comment.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Dr. Hayman.
So I'd just like to take a moment and urge all the public to, that listen tonight, to go out and educate themselves as thoroughly as possible on where we sit currently in today's state with the COVID. There's a lot of information that is coming out in regards to actions that we did take in the early onset and information that's coming out in regards to, you know, the vaccines themselves and protocols. So I think it's very wise for the public to go out and educate themselves personally. And so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Blades?
Yes, just one quick announcement to the public and then over to the council as well as I, I will have to leave this meeting early, so right before 7 o'clock, just so everybody is well aware. I have no other announcements.
I have two announcements. One is, I think we have a race communications town hall tomorrow, right?
Yes.
So I want to invite public to participate in that, and if you have any questions on what services they provide, any sort of question relating to the services of race, you can ask and then get clarifications from them. And then, on the 7th of this month, Quality of Life, in their meeting, they have the pool town hall. So you can come and participate and get more information on what is happening on the pool, and if you have any questions, any suggestions, you are welcome to participate in that and give your opinion on various things. So I encourage public to participate in both the town hall meetings coming up. And I also want to recognize these two young men who are here, Maverick and his brother. Thanks for your interest to come here whenever possible. I know what the city council is, really appreciate that. Thanks, Mom, for bringing them. Thanks for your time. So that's great. You show interest in these things.
And Maverick, you missed your moment to come ask us questions. Do you have anything? Okay.
Okay, so that's all I have. Let's move on to next item, consent calendar. All items listed on consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before the action is taken. I will now read the one consent item we have, that is, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Richcrest City Council regular meeting dated February 15, 2023. Do any members of the council wish to have this item pulled?
No.
Do any members of the public wish to have this item pulled? Seeing none. So we asked for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do they have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and second?
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Okay, next item, discussion action items. A resolution of the Richcrest City Council to approve a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to add shade structures over the spectator seating at the Kerr McGee Youth Sports Complex baseball and football field. Ms. Wagner?
Good evening, council. So back in November, we brought to you a list of our possible projects, and this was one of them. I'm bringing this project forward because I think that it is a need as we hit triple digits in the summer, and our baseball fields are rented out nine months out of the year to IWV Baseball. It's used for practices, games, tournaments, and we are all It's used for practices, games, tournaments, and we are also renting out the soccer or multi-use field seven months out of the year to IWV Soccer, and they have games and tournaments as well. So this project came in, and I have added a contingency to the amount. So the project amount is $578. This includes a 15% contingency, and it'll put fabric shade structures over all 11 spectator seating areas on the baseball field and the multi-use field. This is gonna be done through, if approved by council, it will be done through a pre-negotiated purchasing contract, and within this, price also includes all of the design permitting and any type of inspections or reviews. The Public Works Director will still be overseeing what is submitted to the county as far as to receive permits, and also during the construction process to make sure that all the things are being followed that need to. So staff is requesting that city council approve the ARPA project and authorize the finance director to allocate the funds and the city manager to sign the contract. With that, I have them open for questions.
Thanks, Ms. Wagner.
And also, this did go in front of the Quality of Life Committee.
Okay.
Just a question to council members, who was on the committee at the time? Was it Doc or was it Skip?
So it got spoke about with both, actually, Doc Heyman and Skip Gorman and Mr. Bruin.
Okay. Anything come up with you guys about this item?
Nope.
No questions?
I presume you both don't have any questions.
No questions, I think it's a fantastic project.
I don't have any questions. But sorry, one correction. Go to the resolution, one, two, three, four, five, six, sixth, whereas.
Okay.
I think it's a copy paste thing, I think. So you said two of which were replacing the banquet hall floor and wall partitions at Kerr McGee's?
That is correct, copy and paste error.
So that needs to be changed to?
Eleven, yeah. Cause-
Is that whereas out, or?
It just needs to be changed to the shade structure project. I can make the correction, Rika, and resend it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so with that, I'll go to the public comment. Does any of the public have any comments on this item? Any public comments on the phone? Seeing none, I bring back to the council.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Second. That looks as amended?
As amended. Thank you, Martin and Rika.
We have a motion and a second?
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, thanks, oh, you're the next, okay. Next item, proposed approval of additional American Rescue Plan Act funds for a construction contingency not to exceed 5,000 for the replacement of the park roofs located at the Leroy Jackson Sports Complex and Upjohn Park. Ms. Wagner.
So on February 1st, city council approved the increase of appropriations in the amount of 6,922 for the roofs on the concession building located at Leroy Jackson Sports Complex and the restroom and gazebo located at Upjohn. During the process, the roofing came back with some additional repairs that weren't listed on the original estimate. So staff is requesting a construction, sorry, construction contingency to replace the fascia and border boards on both monitor roof areas because they are water damaged, and so we would be replacing with new fascia boards and border boards. We feel like this is a good move to make because we're gonna be putting these new metal roofs on. We don't wanna put them on top of boards that already have water damage. So staff is recommending that city council approve an increase in the ARPA funds for a construction contingency not to exceed 5,000. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Wagner. Councilmember, Mr. Gorman, do you have any?
I don't, no questions. Lots of interest, just no questions.
Councilmember Doc Heyman.
So I'm familiar with this one too, but I just have a question, and I'm assuming that, you know, with the new construction and the new wood structure replacement, that it'll be built in a manner that it's going to be more watertight on the wood and painted and-
Correct.
Yeah, so it will-
It'll last a lot longer, we won't have the roof where we have to go in and replace those boards later.
Yep, very good. That's all.
Vice Mayor Blades?
Just a quick question, so I'm used to seeing everything that Travis presents, having, I'm not gonna make any jokes, I promise, but there's usually always some kind of a contingency included in what he presents. Was there not in the previous resolution?
No, I actually missed the contingency, so that is why I'm having to-
That was not my intent to put you on the spot, I was actually just, that was not my intent.
It was my fault.
No, no, that wasn't the intent, actually, I was just making, I was just wondering if something changed and we needed to change the contingency.
No, that was my oversight, I missed putting the contingency in.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to call you out, that was not my intention.
I'm not bothered.
Yeah, I think the original thought was, is that the original quote was a very good quote, and what they found was unexpected.
But that's reasonable, that's reasonable. I'm sorry, now I feel like a jerk.
No, you're fine.
No, nothing further.
All right. So is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, any comments from the phone? Okay, I don't see any, so I'll bring it back to the council.
I just had one other quick question, so as far as the completion date or start or completion date, when, do we have a rough idea?
So they were supposed to be done this week, but due to all of the weather we've been having, they haven't been able to be out working. My plan, I'm following up with them tomorrow to see when their projected end date is. The weather is just stalling out them being able to work. So it should be soon, they do have all of the roofs off, they're lined. If you drive by Upjohn on top of the bathroom building, they've already placed some of the metal on top of that one, but they haven't been out in the last week because of the weather.
So does it look like the shades in this project would be done then before the heat-
It's gonna be complete in the next, yeah.
Before the heat kicks in? That's my only, was the question.
The shade structures, are you talking about at the-
Well, that and this, you know, with-
So the roofs definitely will be done, I would imagine, within the next couple weeks. And then the shade structures, it depends on production and the manufacturer.
Very good, well, good job, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gorman, do you have any? No other. Vice Mayor Blades, okay.
Nothing, I'll actually make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, thanks, Ms. Wagner.
Thank you, Nerissa.
Committee reports, RACVB.
So RACVB, we had our meeting on February 22nd. It was pretty brief meeting, we welcomed one of our new board members, Chelsea Kessi, she's the GM of Holiday Inn Express, the new hotel that opened. She will be taking the place of Ken Baga, the previous board member, so we're happy to have her. We talked a little bit about some of the filming going on, there were two productions in January, one at Buttermilk Acres, one at Inukinn Airport. They are still working on building up a film portfolio for private properties to help with the location scouts, and they are still coordinating that fam tour. The dates are still to be determined, so I will follow up with you once those are confirmed. Let's see. Then we kind of talked a little bit about some marketing, they had in the month of January, just over 65,000 people that they reached with their marketing. For the next couple months, they're interested in focusing on some of the wildflowers, since it's gonna be hopefully a good spring, good bloom. And then there is some interest in exploring more marketing regarding the ghost towns nearby us, they had a post about Ballarat that did really well, so there's some interest in exploring if that could be potentially another tool used to help recruit or bring in people, heads in beds type of thing. So we will have some more info on the Night on Balsam analytics in March, they did not include that in our marketing report, just because it was an event and not a specific post, so just with the technological stuff of that, they're gonna include that in the March report, so I should have some information on how that specific event post performed at the next update. And then, just talking a little bit about the Night on Balsam, obviously, the RACVB was a huge supporter in that event, and we're very happy to have them helping us with that. And we are already reviewing the feedback that we've been collecting on that past event and getting ready to plan for the next one, so we have a tentative date set in May, and we'll have more outreach and information on that coming out here as we get that moving forward. So the first one was a pretty big success, but there's obviously things we can improve on, and we're working to get the next one put into place, so we know that people are really interested in that. So that's really all I had for RACVB unless there was any questions. It was a pretty quick meeting.
No questions.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay. Sit right here. I'll do City Org since Mayor Bruin's out.
Infrastructure Committee.
So the infrastructure committee, we informally met, it was, we had a noticing issue, so we are going to continue that meeting until the next, till the next month, but I can say that we, we had some informal discussion, nothing was decided or actioned upon around the intersection of Mahan and Ridgecrest. The Public Works Director gave us a lot of good information on what that looks like to put in a four-way stop, whether it's stop signs, stoplights. And then we, let's see, talked about light timings, that was a good conversation, actually. And then Solomon, I think you might have had a quick conversation with Public Works Director on race and when they're gonna be complete. I think, I have notes somewhere in here, hold. I should be more prepared than this, my apologies. Race should be done with their drops in March, I believe, no, drop installation still to be done, four or five months later, but the end of March they should be done, is that correct, Travis? Okay, cool. Projected, so asterisks. Yep. That's all I have.
So thank you, sir. Other committees, boards, or commissions? Anybody on other committees? Nothing?
No.
None? Okay. Let's move on to city manager report.
Yes, I do have just a couple items to report out. On the Night on Balsam Street event, the city had hired Raw Media to do a couple of promotional videos for that event, primarily for future marketing, for events to be able to get, you know, like additional wineries or additional breweries in here over time. So I do have a video that was produced, it's a little bit longer than what initially went on social media, so John, you wanna go and start that?
Oh! Welcome to a night on Balsam! I just wanna say thank you very much to everyone out here for our Night on Balsam, this is an incredible event, you can't beat this, great food, great wine, great beer, of course, really appreciate it.
Hey, we just wanted to say thank you to the Chamber, the City of Ridgecrest, Waste Management, Raw Media, and all the people that supported this great event, got a great crowd, everybody's having a good time, lots of food, lots of wine, what do you think?
Oh, great turnout.
It's great turnout, great to see the community out enjoying each other.
I want to thank Ridgecrest for bringing the wine walk back to Balsam Street, we're having a great time.
We're having a great time, I look forward to this in the future. Thank you, Ridgecrest!
Thank you!
My name is Rocky, we are at a night on Balsam here in Ridgecrest, California, and I'm very thankful that the city's finally doing this again, it's been a while.
So hey, good evening, everybody, my name's Kyle Blades, I'm one of the five city council members on your local Ridgecrest City Council, and I want to say that we couldn't be more happy with how things are going tonight, and we look forward to more of these events in the future.
We're gonna be bringing more of these to our community, we've got wine, we've got people, we've got food, we've got great entertainment, we're destined to bring more and more of this to our community, and thank you, Ridgecrest, for coming out, we look forward to seeing you out here again, and I promise you, we're gonna continue to deliver on that promise and make you Ridgecrest the community you want. Thank you again, so excited to be here, and thank you to everyone who made this event
Yeah, like I said, we'll be posting that on our social media accounts, as well as our city webpage, and then obviously, we'll be using it as marketing material to promote future events. Also, part of this, one of the things that we noticed when we did the event on Balsam Street was we had some lighting issues, so one of the things that staff is looking at is working with the local businesses there to be able to string up on a permanent basis some LED lights across the street. So we're gonna be doing some research on that, maybe getting with the local businesses and seeing if we can, you know, make that happen. One, it will change the look of the street, and also provide additional lighting for events that may run in the evening hour, so staff is gonna be getting together again here later this month to start working on the next event that we're looking at in May. So we're hoping that we'll have a fairly decent turnout on the next event. I know, as mentioned earlier, we're having our pool, new pool town hall meeting during Quality Life on March 7th at 5:30. We're hoping that we can get as many people out as we can at that event, we will have our consultants there that will be walking us through the process of getting public input regarding, you know, what features and what type pool the community is interested in. And then subsequent to that, the mayor will be making a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce during their noon meeting on March 14th, and at that meeting, the mayor will be discussing some of the information we got from the community at the town hall meeting on the 7th, as well as outlining some information that we are receiving from the community on a online poll that we're taking right now. Currently, it's been running about a week, and we've had about a little over 400 people take the survey, so we're getting some really good information from the public, a lot of priorities on the features of the pool, as well as a lot of written comments, about at least half the people that have taken the survey are leaving written comments. And the last thing, just to let the council know, we have solidified for Mr. Heyman and I to go to Washington DC from March 21st to March 24th to accompany our lobbying consultants to meet with those folks and work on funding for the wastewater facility as well as the interconnect for the groundwater authority. So that trip is, has been set, and Capitol Corps will be making arrangements for certain meetings with elected officials and federal department heads, federal departments. So that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Next item, future agenda items. Any, do you have anything? No, I don't have any. So do you have any future agenda item?
I was pleased to see in one of the forthcoming committees, I just glanced at the agenda, I think that perhaps the median art program may get resurrected. I remember, I enjoyed that, and that's something I certainly want to participate in. Beyond that, nothing right now.
Yeah, I enjoyed it, I was on that committee at that time, so. Okay, thank you. Mayor and council comments. Dr. Heyman?
Thinking back on the Balsam Street experience, which I enjoyed, in fact, our little family went and visited Flightline last night, when you could actually get in, have a beer, it's a great place. I have a question, see if somebody in the room can answer it quickly, what was the name of the group or fellow or person who was making the music on Balsam Street that glorious night? who was making the music on Balsam Street that glorious night? Who was the music maker? Somebody's rushing to the microphone.
His name is Eric Lawrence, and the band name is The Lawrence Synthesis. Am I correct? Yeah, I just wrote about it today, too.
Well, how do you spell his last name?
I'll let you know right now.
Really put her on the spot.
No, it's okay. I literally was talking.
I liked his music. It was just right for the occasion. Wasn't too loud. You could still talk. It was just perfect.
His name's Eric and Lawrence, L-A-W-R-E-N-C-E. And the band name is The Lawrence Synthesis.
The Lawrence Synthesis.
Yes.
Hey, my friend, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Speaking about the Balsam Street night, I want to appreciate Megan and Isabel for putting this event together. You guys did a great job, so thank you very much for your efforts on that. Appreciate it. Okay, so we are done, I think, right? Right? So the meeting is adjourned at 6:49. Thank you, everybody.